Welcome to Full Town Council on the 9th of July. Thank you for coming along and we will get started with item number one on the agenda, which is questions and comments from the public and councillors. Do we have any questions, Sarah? Oh, sorry, yeah, I'll just say we'll take the traffic and the golf course ones under the items if that's okay. Annette. You'll have to, just for the live stream, please. Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to make a comment. This is about crossing the river. Taking notice of serious error revealed during the post office inquiry of failure to disclose documentation. What action is the council taking to reveal the briefing instructions to Sustrans - apologies for the typo - and the subsequent full report from Sustrans? This was paid for by the town council from public funds and must, should, be revealed, published before proceeding further. In particular, how were the various estimated costs of the several river crossing routes arrived at? The reason I'm asking that is because I understand from previous experience that you can only arrive at a cost after you've designed, had the bridge engineered, and then gone out to quotations. Thank you very much.
Cheers. Thank you, Annette. Yeah, I think we are probably planning to publish that full report in the fullness of time. Tim, I don't know if you've got a bit more to say on this as the Chair of Sustainable Travel? Let me go and have a look in the week and I will get back to you on email if that's okay? Oh, that's fine. Yeah. Tim, sorry.
I think the plan is we will put that out and there's absolutely no reason not to. And happy to put out the briefing instructions as well. I mean, it's perfectly legitimate. No, what you've got there is an executive summary. Yeah.
But I don't think you're using a microphone either.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, we will put the whole thing out. What we've put out so far is just the executive summary, but we wanted to make sure that Wiltshire had it and had a chance to read it before we put out. So, yeah, they've had it for probably three, four weeks now, I think. I can't honestly remember. In terms of the costings, at this stage, it's really very much an outline costing. It's in no way a detailed costing and it's done by looking at comparator projects from around the country. And I know they looked at the Bath Keys one, but I can't remember what the other ones were that they used to look at. So, but that will be in the report.
Okay, thank you, Tim. I wait with bated breath.
Cheers, Annette. Thank you. Any other questions? Not that aren't traffic or golf courses? That's fine. Andrew, you have your hand up? Yes?
Yes, I'd just like to congratulate the town council on grooming someone for stardom. As far as I know, it's the first time in living memory that a Bradford and Avon resident has been a Member of Parliament. So, I'd like to wish well to Sarah Gibson, MP.
Chair, if I could follow that, I think indeed congratulations to Sarah for her success in there and to our own MP, Brian, and joining Sarah as a successful resident, my very own neighbour, Anna Sabine. So, I feel gold is everywhere.
Yeah, on both of those subjects, actually, I should mention that we're going to be contacting Brian as our new MP as soon as we can to come in and meet with us on the council to sort of talk about how we can work together going forward. I was going to mention on Sarah, who has the best ever excuse for, or apology, I should say, on here that I've ever seen, and it just says, "being an MP", which probably seems fair enough, doesn't it? So, that takes us to item number two. Sarah, for apologies, have we got any others?
Just councillor Kay alongside councillor Gibson.
Brilliant. Yeah, I should probably also just pass on our full congratulations from everybody at the town council to Sarah for, yeah, for her election to Parliament, which is incredible news, really.
Sarah, if I may, I think also we've had apologies belatedly from David, who's been taken unwell this afternoon. And I did see something from Emma this evening to say she wasn't going to make it because of work, so not quite ideal, but there you go.
Thank you, Simon. Okay, item number three is declarations of interest from councillors. Do we have any declarations of interest? Nope. Lovely. We will move on to item number four, which is approving the minutes of the last Full Town Council on the 7th of May this year. Anybody have any comments or tweaks they want to make to the minutes? Nope. Lovely. Do we have a proposer for those? Tim, Alison as a second there. All those in favour of adopting those minutes? Lovely, everybody. Item number five, matters arising from the last committee meeting. It says none here. I'm going to ask if anybody has any others? Nope. Lovely. Okay, item number six is the Chair's update. So, I did put this along with the agenda, but I can happily run through a few bits that are on here. So, the first thing I should probably say is that I have sadly had to turn down an awful lot of official engagements because they just don't really work with having a full-time job, sadly. So, that's been a bit of a shame. I know Sam's picked up a few for me here and there, but both work full-time. So, we've done our best, but that's not to say we haven't been to a few things. So, on the 26th of June, I was here in this hall for the Wiltshire Education Music Prize Giving Ceremony, and I gave out the prize for Inspirational Singing Leader. One of those winners was Felicity Courage from here in Bradford, so that was absolutely lovely. And there were some live performances as well. And as somebody with no musical talent whatsoever, it was awe-inspiring and brilliant to see. I also had a very enjoyable lunch break on Friday, the June 28th, with the Running Out of Time relay, where I was thankfully in a mercifully very, very short leg of the relay from Christchurch down to the Tithe Barn and then was put into a unique outfit, we shall say. You can see the pictures, a very unique upcycled outfit, which was made by some residents, I think, including Alex as well, which was lovely. The whole event was really, really joyous, so many people there. And I think it got some really good coverage for the town and for some of the sort of eco ideas that we're trying to espouse as well. So, that was really enjoyable. I also wrote a letter to our friends over in Norden, our twin town, which I believe councillor Kay delivered and went to speak to them over there as well. And also, along with councillor Igar, attended a meeting online with the new mayor of Tubas in the West Bank in Palestine, which Bradford and Avon has a friendship link with. So, it was really lovely to continue that link and to sort of hand over from their previous mayor to their new mayor. And then there were also some meetings as well, including one with Wiltshire Council on traffic, which will be coming up in the next item, so I will come to that in a second. But those are the main things. And, yeah, there'll be more in the future, but I apologise the ones I've had to apologise for. Item number seven on the agenda is traffic update and discussion following the meeting with Wiltshire Council Cabinet members and officers. So, we have a few attachments to the agenda that go with this one, and I appreciate we have some questions from the public as well. So, what I'll do is just run through some of the sort of background and what's with the agenda, and then we can go to discussion and we can come to those questions as makes sense. So, with the agenda, there was the response from councillor Holder and councillor Ray to the letter I wrote last month. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to read that one, basically summarising a lot of what they said in person at that meeting. I appreciate not all of the councillors were at that meeting, but hopefully you've had a chance to read that. There are also some results from our most recent engagement on this topic that are there to be read as well. And then there's sort of the where we are now briefing note, which is relatively short, so I'll just run through it quickly so everybody knows where we are, and then we can sort of launch into a discussion on where we go next. So, the town council held a meeting with Wiltshire Council Cabinet member for highway, street scene and flooding and the head of Highway Asset Management and Commissioning on the 21st of June. And as a result, the town council has now received a reply to the letter of the 16th of May, which requested clarification on a number of traffic-related issues. The replies included with the agenda papers for the full council meeting, as I mentioned. Wiltshire Council Cabinet members for highways and for transport have now stated they would consider any of the three options in the modelling report for detailed design work. This is despite the outcome of the WS Atkins traffic modelling... Sorry, apologies. I can talk slower. I always talk far too quickly. Wiltshire Council Cabinet members for highways and for transport have now stated they would consider any of the three options in the modelling report for detailed design work. This is despite the outcome of the WS Atkins traffic modelling report, which recommended option C as the most viable scheme to meet the town's objectives. The cabinet member's letter requires the town council to demonstrate an overall level of support at a local level for any scheme to be taken forward to the next stage. The recent public engagement exercise did not show sufficient support for option C, which was the recommended option from the independent modelling. Only 30% gave a generally supportive score, and that's been deemed to be five, six or seven out of seven on that most recent engagement. 42% of those who commented supported a return to some type of one-way system similar to that which operated during the pandemic, whereas 8% commented they preferred to leave the traffic system as it is. Wiltshire's letter also demonstrated a new degree of flexibility on how buses might be treated and acknowledged there might be challenges on the practical implementation of the so-called bus gates. However, first bus, who operate the D1 and the D1X, have yet to reply to the scheme's proposals. Since we do not currently have a clear overall endorsement of any one scheme, it is proposed that a final round of consultation be undertaken to arrive at an option which can credibly be presented to Wiltshire Council as having achieved an overall level of local support. To that end, there appear to be four possibilities. So, they are option A, B and C from the Atkins modelling, and of course, the fourth option being to do nothing. Councillors now need to decide the best way of achieving this and to help ease this thorny issue which has blighted the town for many decades. So, that is basically, I've just read almost verbatim there what's attached to the agenda, just so we're all up to speed. So, that basically summarises what was said and the outcomes of that meeting with Wiltshire Council Cabinet members and also what they reiterated in their letter back to us about 10 days ago now, I think they sent it through. So, I don't know if councillors have comments or thoughts on that before we go out to public questions. Anybody have anything they want to add at that point? Katie?
Well, just to say that I think, yeah, it feels a sort of frustrating position to be in it to a degree, that we probably do need to do a final round of consultation because we can all surmise what we think most people in the town might say they want, but we don't actually have documentation for that insofar as this past engagement was focused on option C because that was the logical process that we'd been engaged with, with Wiltshire Council, who asked us to do the modelling, asked us to pay towards it. The modelers actually prepared the consultation materials, including the survey form, and based that questioning around option C. It was actually, as I remember, Tim may correct me, but as I remember, us who said, "Well, can you include reference to A and B in the survey form so that that gives that context to people?", which obviously people have picked up on, enabling those who commented. The question, I think, for that was if you didn't, if you don't like C, why not? And so, that's prompted those people to say they prefer something similar to the pandemic scheme. So, we're in a bit of a sort of pickle. Wiltshire Council have obviously sort of done quite a rethink, presumably owing to the fact that there's two completely new cabinet ministers. I think we're on our kind of third set of cabinet members for highways and transport since this council was formed. Of course, they don't define what an overall level of support would be, but I guess a majority in some way. But, I mean, we can't get anything that directly provides that, but I think we probably need something where we try a better means of reaching the public. I think the other thing with our initial, with the consultation that we did, we haven't reached 1,000 respondents, so far less than responded to the initial survey. And that took a lot of reminders, I think, to get to the level we did get. And I think maybe, I mean, one thought I would have to suggest is a single-issue flyer to every house perhaps, but maybe that kind of detail is to be discussed further. But those are my thoughts, really, that, yeah, it's a tricky situation we're in, but we don't want to lose the momentum we've got. We've just got to find an intelligent and engaging way to go to a further stage with it all.
Thank you, Katie. Yeah, it feels like we're almost there, but it's still tricky, isn't it? Just to quickly mention, and I'll come to you, Simon, that the phrase "overall level of support at a local level" that I mentioned is pulled directly from the letter that they sent through Wiltshire Council. Simon?
Why, we need to be very careful because otherwise we'll get ourselves into another pickle. I think the consultation up to now, we've now seen the weakness of it. It wasn't, it was skewed very much towards option C for whatever reasons, and as a result of which, despite an awful lot of work and an awful lot of effort on a lot of people's part, we still don't have a clear answer or anything that we can work on. That's as is. The challenge is, what have we got to do to order, to satisfy Wiltshire Council's threshold? And my concern is that when we entered into this, we entered into it explicitly with the understanding that this council would decide on what option we wanted to pursue. That was, that was the understanding by which we signed up to that. And therefore, I think that should, Wiltshire Council, for whatever reasons they're changing their minds, are still bound by that. So, we can, if you people feel we need to go out and have further consultation, which is something this council will discuss, so be it. It's going to be another round of consultation, which I know a lot of people will find frustrating, but if we feel safer in doing that, fine. But what happens if we get a situation where we have a similar figure, 30% for option C, 42 for option A? I suspect it will be a bit clearer because the consultation will be, shall we say, more even-handed among the options without some of the attempts of Atkins to take us down a particular path. But still, what is going to, what are Wiltshire Council going to see as a satisfactory threshold? And why is it not going to be enough for us as the council to go back to them and say, "We have consulted, we have listened"? Yes, we have numerical data that at a certain time, a certain number of people, as many as we could, have actually supported this or that option. But actually, as a town councillor, having looked at this issue for years now, we have come to the conclusion that this is what is best for the town, and we therefore would like Wiltshire Council to proceed along this. What I would say is that whichever option we take, it's only going to be the first of several steps. So, it's not going to be a question of one wins and one loses. Whichever option we go for, there is going to be a degree of introduction, a degree of measurement, a degree of reaction. There'll be mitigating measures. We will learn a little bit as we go along. It would have been nice if we'd been doing that over the last three years when we had the original system still in place, but actually, so we're not going down any fixed path. This is not a zero-sum game, but it's how do we best get started? And my concern is that if we allow Wiltshire Council, or anybody else for that matter, to say it has to be a majority popular vote, then we will find ourselves stuck and we will find ourselves divided again as a town. I think we need to decide how we want to proceed, and Wiltshire Council should honour the commitment that we asked for them, that this town council will ultimately ask them which way to go forward.
Thank you, Simon. Yeah, I personally fundamentally agree with your main point there, which is I think the decision, when that comes, has to become from this council, as a vote of this council. I think that's really clear. Overall level of local support can mean all sorts of things, and I think the support of the town council is an overall level of local support. We just need to satisfy ourselves that we can see that here in the town. So, I fully appreciate what you're saying on that. And I think the other part around it is, yeah, I think it's frustrating that the cabinet members have changed, the goalposts seem to be moving constantly on this, and it is and has been slightly out of our hands. But I'm also very keen to make sure that we get to a stage where we can recommend an option to Wiltshire Council. And I think one of the things that did come out of that meeting with them the other week, which hasn't maybe made it into writing, is the fact that this isn't, you know, we're not going to put forward an option and that is it. That will be going in. There will be detailed design work. We'll obviously want to look at mitigation on different parts of different routes, depending on what option we go down. So, it is the end of this stage and the start of the next stage, I guess. But, yeah, I agree. I think fundamentally, it needs to be a vote of this council that puts it forward to Wiltshire Council. How we arrive at that decision is something we need to discuss and look at, and maybe it is a final consultation, and that's something we can discuss, you know, as soon as we can. Has anybody got anything to add? Or I'm just conscious there were some public questions as well? Tim?
Well, well, only that I'm absolutely gobsmacked at the way this is... Sorry, I'm absolutely gobsmacked at the way this has panned out because the modelling study was done with the full knowledge of Wiltshire personnel. They had major input into it, and it came out with a firm recommendation, which we then consulted on. And, you know, obviously, you know, that has not gained sufficient support to be proceeded with. So, so then to turn around and say, "Well, any three, any one of these three is fine", I mean, or, well, four, I suppose, yeah. You know, I'm just, you know, in a state of despair with it, really, frankly. And the same with the buses. I mean, they were really hardline when we were talking about this. There was, there was no room for discussion at all. And to then turn around and say, "Well, it's almost like a sideshow", I'm just, I'm just very disappointed with it, really. But anyway, I mean, we are where we are and we have to, we have to make, make the best of that situation. And I certainly agree that this, you know, it's going to be an evolution because even if we, you know, decide to go for option A or some other option, they will start designing that and doing detailed design on it. So, you know, and mitigations and design, so some things might be possible, others might not. So, we don't know now exactly how it's going to pan out, but I think we need to set the right direction. So, yeah, yeah, that's all I've got to say, really.
Cheers, Tim. Yeah, I think a lot of us share your frustrations. Kate?
I think what's also really important is to, to make it really clear in all of our communications to the town that none of these mitigations, none of the measures, I should say, are actually going to solve the major problem of the town. Whichever system we put in place, none of these are going to stop it being chock-a-block at, you know, nine o'clock in the morning and five o'clock in the evening. And I think, I think we need to be really careful that people don't think that that's going to happen, that ultimately, we want to make sure that our aims are achieved of widening pavements, safer for pedestrians, hopefully safer for cyclists. But what we're not going to be able to do anything about really, which is what Wiltshire said at the moment, is traffic volume. So, I think Simon's right, but it's, it's going to be a starting point, and then there's going to have to be mitigation measures that get put in after an initial system gets put in. But, yeah, none of these are actually going to stop the main problem of traffic congestion at busy times because of the volume of traffic.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And we, you know, we pushed them on that in the meeting, didn't we? And they were very clear that it's, yeah, a huge problem that they're not necessarily going to, well, they're definitely not going to resolve with us. Simon, then, Katie?
All I'm going to add to that is absolutely, anybody who's looked at this knows that there are no perfect solutions and probably can't be, certainly not at town level. But if we get started with this and we go on a journey which is going to see progressive, if only incremental progress, what a success that will have been for the town. And I don't think we should underestimate the value of getting started on a, and engaging with Wiltshire Council on an ongoing basis to find improvements to our traffic and related issues.
Yeah, no, I would agree. I mean, nobody knows better than maybe some of us all sat up here how hard this has been to get to this point, so I wholeheartedly agree. Katie?
It may seem a minor pedantic point, but just, and it may not be what you meant, Kate, but the idea of mitigations after a scheme's been implemented, I'd feel that they should be implemented with, as the scheme is implemented, the mitigation should be in there from the start, should we go down a scheme of the kind that option A and C suggests.
I think it's just the idea that maybe whatever mitigation measures are put in in the beginning may not work 100%, and so there may need to be an evolution of those measures, I think.
Brilliant. Thank you. Okay, I'm conscious there were some public questions on this, so let's move on to those. Who did we have, Sarah? Joyce?
Right, thank you. Can you hear me all right? Well, it's just a little thing, really. I think I can read my writing. "It would seem that the residents are not convinced about number three option". And I've just been looking back on some reports on the traffic modelling, and this was in May, and this is Jack saying that there is, quote, "considerable doubt about the viability of bus gates in Silver Street", adding that "they have a record of unreliability and are often removed after a short period. These are usually used on narrow streets and trails can be run, but at a cost". And I wondered if Jack still feels that way.
I am absolutely not disputing you. I honestly don't remember saying that, whether I was quoting somebody, but bus gates, so Wiltshire Council spoke to us about the bus gates, and they called them priority... Sorry, Tim, go. What were they calling them?
Strictly speaking, what they proposed is not a bus gate. It's a shuttle working system. Sorry, it's, it's not, strictly speaking, what they've proposed as part of the model, part of the modelling study is not really a bus gate. What they refer to it as is traffic light controlled shuttle working. So, in other words, it's alternate one-way but controlled by traffic lights. Yeah, yeah. So, when we were discussing this with them during the modelling, as I said just now, it was, you know, an absolute obligation that they had to run these buses up Silver Street and round New Road. Now, the discussion we had the other day, they admitted for the first time that potentially there would be operational issues with running that system. And so, that they were ready to negotiate about that. And, and my feeling was that they were backing off on that particular issue. So, I think the bus gate issue is, to a degree, a sideshow on the whole thing. It's a kind of sideshow, really. So, it may, in theory, it's viable, but in practice, because you've got places like Whitehead's Lane and Coppice Hill joining Silver Street, that makes it incredibly complex in terms of the operation of a traffic light system. So, it may be just, frankly, just going a step too far. And that's what they were alluding to, is that there are operational, potential operational difficulties with, with that system. No, it doesn't. Well, hang on a minute. Just so you can be clear, option A and option C, as, as were proposed and modelled, had so-called bus gates, both of those systems. But what Wiltshire are saying is it actually, it's questionable about whether they're actually practically, yeah, viable, yeah, yeah. So, to a degree, I would tend to put the bus gate issue to one side, really.
I thought that was the basis of the whole point of the report, the modelling report and what they've come up with.
Well, it was certainly a significant element, shall we say. Yeah.
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, I was surprised when we went to that meeting with Wiltshire Council that they were sort of backpedaling relatively quickly on bus gates or shuttle working, whatever it is they want to call them. And they were not forthcoming with loads of amazing examples in their response to the letter either. So, as Tim says, I think it's probably a bit of a, a bit of a sideshow now. So, we'll see where they, where they move on the buses next. Okay, were there any other public questions? Yes? Sarah? Nope. Happy now? Lovely? Go on.
It's just a comment that it appears that everybody feels that a one-way system is going to happen of some sort. And I'm personally, I've been opposed to it all my life and set up the Traffic Forum in the 80s to oppose it and got the 18-ton weight limit put on the town bridge. So, I'm opposed to it because of... I'm opposed to it because of what it would do to the character of the town. I'm opposed to it because of all the traffic that will then go down New Road, all the residents there. That's not a road, that's a residential street, as far as I'm concerned. I'm opposed to it because of the emergency services being able to get up now. As we all know, Mason's Lane can very often be blocked with lorries that get stuck. And it closes the town down. If you have a one-way system, how are the emergency services going to get up to the schools, the old people's home, the north of the town, basically? Because the ambulances and the fire engines and police all come from Trowbridge. So I'm opposed to it, but it appears to me that everybody thinks that this one-way system that happened during Covid was wonderful. But remember, there wasn't much traffic about during Covid. And all you're going to do is encourage traffic into the town because they immediately think a one-way system speeds up the traffic. And the highways department, historically, when I spoke to them in the 80s, all they're interested is the flow of traffic. They're not interested in the number of cars that come through our town. They just want the flow of Wiltshire traffic to keep going. And I'm just saddened that a one-way system seems to be the way we're going.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you for sharing your own thoughts. I think we're very likely heading to a sort of stage of final consultation on this, so do make sure that you get your sort of feelings heard and get your responses in, for sure. There's no decision that's been taken yet, I can guarantee you of that. Okay, any other... Jeremy? Oh, you may, yes.
This has been going on, the situation with our traffic for years. And a lot of people I speak to want the one-way traffic system back because they said it worked, it kept the traffic flowing. I live on the Frome Road and the traffic there is seven days a week, nose to tail. And because when they're outside queuing up to come through the town, they don't turn their engines off, although you did have a sign up, but they ignore that. And all the pollution, if I was to take you into the front of my house, everything I touch is black. So that pollution is all coming into our properties, even if we don't open a window. I don't open a window. So something should be done. I know that we really do need a bypass, but we're never going to get that. That would have been an ideal solution to our problem. You'll never stop the traffic coming through, but at least when we had the one-way system and everybody I've spoken to agreed with this, it kept the traffic flowing. They didn't stand still with their engines running all the time, which is what they do now. You know, so I mean, people's health, it must be terrible for some people in this town with the pollution that we have. In fact, I read in the paper, and it was true, that we have the highest pollution in the whole of England
I mean, I have no idea about that, but you read it in the paper, you're not sure if it's true, is a strong statement. I will say exactly the same to you as I said to Sarah. Forgive me for repeating myself. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. We are moving to very likely a final stage of consultation. So yeah, please do make your thoughts known. I think the last three minutes have encapsulated exactly why this is a thorny issue. Any other public questions? Yes, Andrew, sorry, yes, back to you.
Thank you, and thank you, Carol, for letting me go after you. And if Jeremy still wants to speak, thank you, Jeremy, for letting me go before you. I just want to make a statement and then ask a very, very short question at the end. The executive summary is, please don't knock option D and please never call it do nothing because it's the mitigation measures that are doing the heavy lifting. Now, there are flaws in the study. It's a shame that they chose a year fifteen or more into the future because we can't relate to those traffic forecasts, they're all appalling. And the study hasn't actually shown that any of the options would facilitate slow but steady traffic movements. Now, I think we all know from the engagement exercise that some people are trying to prevent congestion and some of us are wanting to improve conditions for walkers and reduce traffic volumes. Congestion is defined by traffic being slowed by traffic. So if you prevent congestion, traffic speeds up and I think that's not what people who want to use the town centre want. So the thing about the mitigation measures and some kind of option D plus or variation on it is that Wiltshire Council are incorrect to tell you that it's not possible to incrementally reduce traffic volume through Bradford and Avon. It is possible. They're incorrect. It's wrong for them to say that we mustn't be allowed to reduce traffic volume through Bradford and Avon. And if we do, it doesn't simply mean that that traffic will go round another way through someone else's community. There are many different reactions to reducing traffic volume. Now, we're putting together a group of local people, climate-friendly Bradford and Avon, Cycling UK, Living Streets, private citizens, some of whom have highway engineering experience. And we want to talk to Wiltshire Council as the Highway Authority about this, a method of increasing journey times through traffic through Bradford and Avon, throughout Bradford and Avon, by reducing the design speed of all the roads in Bradford and Avon, not just in the town centre. And that is by widening pavements, therefore narrowing the carriageways, and in some particular cases introducing cycle lanes. Now, if you increase overall average through journey times in the peak hours, the indirect result is that some people make a different decision about their journeys. And the traffic we've been blighted with particularly since 2013, the completion of the Winsley Bypass, reduces. We can reduce traffic volume indirectly. But what we do directly by those kinds of measures, widening pavements, introducing cycle lanes and a few other mitigations, is to improve conditions for pedestrians. And again, indirectly, we reduce emissions and improve air quality. Now, options A, B and C are all very well. They're all traffic management options. Wiltshire Highways speaks the language of traffic management. But if we do an option D plus, in other words, because of course, any management of traffic through one-way and so on is going to increase some people's journey distance and therefore increase their journey time, but most of all, increase their emissions. So we want to put together a scheme that's across a wide area throughout the town, from boundary to boundary of the town, in fact, but focusing, of course, on the centre and the areas near the schools and the shops and the stations and so on. And we plan to engage with Wiltshire Council on that. We won't accept them trying to tell Bradford and Avon that you cannot reduce traffic volume through Bradford and Avon. What we're proposing is completely compatible with the objectives they've told you about for their local transport plan, the priorities they want to introduce. It can be a model for other towns across Wiltshire. And it can happen here, it can be demonstrated here. So that would be not doing anything to change the traffic circulation initially, but concentrating on the mitigations alone, on Market Street, on New Road and so on, but also on Trowbridge Road, on the approach roads to the north of the town, on Frome Road and so on. Because some of us, pavements, it's not civilised how narrow they are or they're missing altogether. We don't accept that and we shouldn't accept that. And we think we can persuade Wiltshire Council that this sort of approach at right angles to what they've been looking at with us, with you, can work and should be given a chance. Now, it may be that when we've done that, letting...
Andrew, can I just interrupt you for a second? Are we coming towards a question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
When the mitigation does its work, it may naturally emerge that we can introduce... Okay.
Let's get to the question if you've got one, Andrew.
To finish up after those, and I'd like to help these people afterwards, that we will engage with Wiltshire Council to try and soften them up on a right way to go. And it would be presumably an option D, but by no means do nothing. So my question is, would the town council also like us to engage with you on this same kind of direction? Because these options in the study don't do the job and I think I've heard it from members of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. I can see Simon's got a hand up.
I can say that, actually, Andrew, that's music to my ears. I've been arguing for years now that we're going about this in the wrong way. However, however, we are where we are. We have the option to go forward in some form. And what I don't think I'm prepared to risk, I'll listen, but I don't think I'm prepared to risk further delay, further discussion, further engagement in the hope that Wiltshire Council will come up with an even better option. So we are where we are and I think what we as a county council have to pick out the best of this and start moving forward on it. I would hope that in due course, not just you, but we, will all win the argument that we need to treat the traffic situation and everything associated with it in the town as a whole, that we are ultimately looking to reduce traffic volume, not solve traffic congestion. So I wholeheartedly support the sentiment and possibly the goal. But what I don't want to see it do is interfere with the process which should now seem to be quite close to completing.
Thank you, Simon. Tim?
Yeah, I absolutely agree as well. I'm not sure what you're saying necessarily conflicts with any of these systems, actually, Andrew. And it's worth perhaps bearing in mind that the local cycling and walking infrastructure, the local cycling and walking infrastructure plan is due to be fleshed out next year. So that would be the ideal opportunity to really engage with Wiltshire Council. And it can go alongside whatever option that we look at in terms of traffic management. And in fact, you could argue that it's part really of the detailed design process. But one thing I would urge you to bear in mind is money is an object. Wiltshire Council is tight for money. So you're going to have, you won't get everything. You absolutely won't get everything. But what you need to do is to prioritise what is going to be most useful. But if you come up, I mean, I'm more than happy to talk to you about that anytime. But yeah, I don't think it should derail what we're doing now. And in fact, it may well end up complementing it, I hope.
Brilliant. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Sharon. I'd love to, thank you for those comments. And I'd love to agree with councillor McNeil Ritchie if I thought that any of the three options were going to deliver even what they promise, which is slow and steady traffic movements through the town. But the study hasn't shown that. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Any other questions on traffic? Jeremy, have you got one on traffic? Yep, go for it.
It was more, is this on? Yeah. It was more of an observation, really. So I noticed a month or three ago, traffic data strips across the road. Before we engage in any heavily financial commitment, I think we need to understand how the traffic is changing through Bradford. It strikes me on a, from my own observations, that the traffic has started to sort of drop through Bradford. Well, yes, perhaps you're looking out the window at the wrong time, I don't know. I mean, there are a lot of roadworks going on, so that has changed, you know, that constantly changes the state of the traffic. And that's about it, really, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Yeah, I think that's probably something that will come in at the design stage. I would hope, very much so, that Wiltshire Council Highways will be looking at the latest traffic figures and making sure they feed those into any design work they do, for sure. We make sure they've got the latest, hopefully. Tim?
Jeremy, there's been a whole series of these traffic counts done over the last few months. Some of them have been at the request of the Sustainable Travel Group and LH FIG because we've had various road safety issues. So some of them have been involved with that. And that's a kind of ongoing programme, if you like. And I believe even some of them probably are associated with what's happening at the golf course as well. So they're not all associated with the town council or Wiltshire Council. And those surveys can be done by private companies. And Wiltshire Council don't get the results of those. They have to give permission and make sure they're safe. But I don't believe they get the results of those particular traffic counts. But that is an ongoing programme. And I know there are others scheduled in the coming few months as well. But it's all building towards trying to improve the safety of the town and help with design. So that's what it's all about. But there's just been more recently than there have been for a while, that's all.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions on traffic? No, fine. Has anybody else got anything to add in terms of councillors? Yes, Sam?
Yeah, just thinking about the way forward here. Do councillors agree that perhaps we're not right now at the stage where we can go to a final consultation and say, is it A, B, C or D that you think is best for the town? One point being clearly these bus gates or shuttle working systems. Because currently, option A and C both have those as part of the system, right? So option A closer to the Covid one-way system, but still having the shuttle working system, which a lot of people have doubts about. And of course, there's the wider question of are people fully aware of the implications of implementing one of those systems? And so I'm wondering whether at this stage we should be looking to have a kind of concerted effort around perhaps a working group to come up with what this final consultation looks like, with potentially pros and cons of each of the four options as they are. And also probably as well, waiting for confirmation from First Bus regarding that. Because I think that is, obviously, would they have a final say on that, Tim, in terms of whether we could move forward without the bus infrastructure?
I'm not sure if it would be the final say, but potentially it has cost implications, both for, well, primarily for First Bus. But then potentially also as a knock-on effect to the council. Because if First Bus say, currently, the D1 and I believe the D1X are what is known as commercial services. In other words, they make a profit. And Wiltshire Council does not have to pay for those services to be run. However, if you reach a situation where in order to maintain an hourly or a half-hourly schedule, whatever it is you're trying to maintain, you have to put on an extra bus, that has a big effect on the economics of that bus route. And then at that point, First Bus would say, well, either A, it's still economic and we can do it, or B, it's not. And in order to continue running the service, you, Wiltshire Council, will have to subsidise it. And at that point, Wiltshire Council have to make a decision. Are they going to pay for the extra buses or are they not? So I mean, it's critical to get First Bus's views, really. But yeah, I mean, well, we need to get that answered, really, yeah. But I don't actually believe it would have very much, if any, effect on the actual modelling work that was done. Because the way it was modelled was really only sort of one bus an hour going up Silver Street. And the delay was, you know, two minutes or something like that. So it's really quite small.
Katie?
Yeah, I think Sam's suggestion of a working group to devise this final engagement is important so that councillors, any councillor who wishes to, can have some input. I do think we want to try and move as speedily as we can to going to the next stage now because, you know, as we've all indicated, people's patience and tolerance of being asked, if they feel again and again what they want, will run out. But I think that, well, we've spoken about the reasons why it's necessary to do it. But actually, if we do it, we've got to do it in line with what Wiltshire Council will say are realistic options. So we actually need to get from there. So we actually need to get from them, are we asking people about A, B, C, and D with the bus gates in A and C, which is what the modelling had? Or are we asking people about A and C without bus gates in? Or are we asking about A and C with both opt, with and without, which creates even more options for people to choose from? Because, you know, otherwise, if we ask about A and C with the bus gates as they are in the report, and then we're not actually gonna count them, then, you know, it's, it's a false question, isn't it? So I think we actually need to have a, get real clarity from Wiltshire Council about that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think, I, I agree. I think we need to move as swiftly as we can with this, because I suspect a lot of residents' patience is wearing thin on us moving to some sort of conclusion on this, and I do sympathise heavily with them. So I think whatever we do in terms of a final consultation needs to be done thoroughly, but as quickly as we can move, certainly, despite the fact that it's the summer. I think a sort of a working party is, is a broadly good idea. I think this is such a big issue that I would be very, very keen to make sure that all councillors who want to be involved absolutely can be. So I'm happy as sort of chair of this council to, to write out to everybody and get sort of names of people who are available. Simon?
I would strongly counsel about getting on with this. We're not in a position to take a decision now. Working Party sounds like yet more process, more consultation. We haven't decided, are we going to be inviting people to vote? And what happens then when you have a vote that may be split along some line? And whether Wiltshire Council is going to accept that? I would have thought at this stage it would have been enough to set out very succinctly what the, the key elements of each of the options are, to put those out in public and to invite members of the public to offer their comments. Not to try and do it as a referendum, not to try and count those comments, but to solicit the, their information, the informative side of their thoughts, so that we as town councillors consider the points that are made by members of the public, and then we can get on with this. I fear that if we're going to have a working party, that is going to drag out. We still haven't addressed how we then resolve that in terms of the consultation. If we go to the public in any way which suggests this is a vote, there are real problems with that, which Wiltshire Council could use against us. I think the quickest way would be for us to clarify, so something of what Sam's saying, clarify the options, set them out in public, give people an opportunity to comment on them directly into the council, and for council then to take account of those and any other information they've got at a meeting in the near future.
Yeah. Now, I'm, I'm broadly in agreement with that. I think maybe working parties are, you know, an incorrect name for it, but certainly we need some sort of meeting where we sit down and actually work out what this looks like, what this final stage is gonna look like. I'm not proposing we thrash that out now over the next two hours, because we'll be here for a while. But yeah, as I was sort of saying just a minute ago, I think as chair, I'm happy to write out to all councillors and make sure that we can get together, have a look what that final stage is gonna look like, see what we're looking for from residents, and see how we take shape. And I think key point of that is definitely gonna be clarifying what those options are with Wiltshire Council. Hopefully, they are speedy with any responses, we will chase them as fast as we can, and then to move to some sort of stage where we're able to make that decision and move to that next stage. Because I think it might be you that said earlier, actually, Simon, this isn't the final, you know, we don't pick an option and then that's it, off they go for three years, design it and implement it. It's the end of this stage, the start of the next stage. Everything has a stage, doesn't it? Any other comments before I go to the man with his hand up on the microphone?
Thank you, Jack. Just to say that, could any briefing that you produce have an estimate of the costs associated with each option? Or a range of costs? And which would be Wiltshire's costs and which would be our costs? Thank you.
Cheers. I mean, I think that would be very difficult to do without the detailed design stage. That would be my feeling. We can have a look, I don't know what we'll be able to provide. My, my feeling, as not a highways engineer, would be that that range would be large, as in wide, because, you know, the detailed design, well, depends what you're looking at, yeah. But the detailed design stage, I guess, will draw out where the exact costs or the exact estimated cost will come into it. I can see more hands. Okay, Andrew then Joyce. And then we'll, and then we'll, sorry, and then we'll, and then we'll move along.
You made a reference to reaching a decision. When you reach decision, could you please do that in a public meeting? You're a council and that's where you should be making decisions. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the decision, the decision about what we do sent to Wiltshire Council will be made at a full council meeting, yes. Joyce?
I was just going to say, don't you have a residents' panel of probably 30 or 40 people who meet regularly? Well, surely they are a cross-section of the community and can help you decide rather than put it to the town again. They must be a cross-section.
Katie?
They are 100, and they are, they were demographically selected as a cross-section, so certainly that is a, a, a thought that could be, they don't meet, they are surveyed via a survey sent to them. And that's something we could consider. I think, I mean, working party perhaps gave the impression of something that goes on too long, but a meeting of where councillors can feed in and develop the proposed way ahead as regards the consultation. I think what Andrew was trying to clarify was would that come back to a council meeting? I think what comes back to a full council meeting is, is following a consultation, what decision we then recommend to Wiltshire Council.
Yes, I did indeed mean that if you're making a decision about the consultation, please make that decision in the Sustainable Travel Committee or full council. Thank you.
Any other comments on this, or I'm gonna sort of move us along? Yes, Sam, go.
Sorry, if I could just, yeah, clarify, yeah, obviously, I wasn't intending that this was months and months of us meeting up, you know, behind closed doors or anything like that. I just think that the communication is absolutely key around this, because a lot of people won't have read the report and should be aware of key things. For example, that currently under option C, that is increasing traffic congestion according to the modelling. So really key points like that, really to, to draw them out, and so that people really know what they're getting with the, with this final stage, because we want to do everything according to the book and not derail ourselves, basically.
Brilliant. Thank you. I think we've, we've reached some sort of a level of consensus there that we're gonna look at a final consultation. And as I said, I'm happy to contact all councillors in the morning, basically, and, and set something up so that we can move as swiftly as possible on this. Has anybody got any final thoughts before we move on to the next item? No? Lovely, okay. Let's move on to item number eight on the agenda, which is the Old Golf Course. So this just says latest update on the agenda, and that is because it's sort of only just happened. So again, I apologise, I'm going to read from a piece of paper, it's only one side of A4. But to give you a brief bit of background, as many of you know, I'm sure the Old Golf Course site is currently on the Wiltshire Council draft local plan as a reserve site. As a town council, we've made it clear that we are opposed to development on that site in our official response to that local plan. And we also know that hundreds of local residents also responded to that consultation, specifically with issues relating to that site. At that point, we launched a petition to oppose the development, which I think was around 2,000 signatures, both online and paper copies. And that draft local review, sorry, that draft local plan is now under review and is expected to return later this year, Alison, is that right? Yeah, later this year. Brilliant. Things have obviously changed slightly recently with that site. So again, as I'm sure many people are aware, a few weeks ago, a number of posters were put up around the site from Cala Homes, and I think the following day, vehicles were seen entering the site, and it was clear that testing was underway of some description. Again, at this point, the town council, we reiterated our opposition to development on this site, launched a second petition which reiterated this, and made it clear to everybody how we felt about that. Understandably, many local residents are and continue to be very concerned about the tests that are taking place on that site, particularly in light of that site's previous incarnation as the town tip. So in the last few weeks, I was approached by a, well, an engagement company working on behalf of a company called Cala Homes, who it would appear are seeking to develop that site. They wanted an introductory meeting with the council, so, well, with myself, really. So I attended with councillor Potter as chair of town development and with the chief executive of the council yesterday, literally yesterday afternoon. And, and it was an eye-opening meeting, wasn't it, Alison? Jump in if I miss bits out, I've tried to summarise it, but there was an awful lot that happened. So it's clear that Cala Homes are more progressed in this project than perhaps we knew, well, that we definitely knew about. They've got an option to buy the land from the current landowner, have been conducting tests in the last few weeks. They expect to be completed with these tests in the coming weeks and to then send those samples off for testing. It also, well, the other thing I should say as well is that throughout the meeting, the town council, Travis and I, also made clear to them our continued opposition to development on this site, and that didn't change throughout the meeting. It became pretty clear that I think Cala Homes have obviously been in discussions with Wiltshire Council for some time about developing this land, in whatever way they're looking to do it. They're also planning to fence the entire site in the coming weeks, due to some incidents that they say have taken place around security. So that is expected to happen in the coming weeks. And that would be, as I say, the entire site, so that's including the third of the site at the end that is currently in green belt. They told us they are expecting to be in a position to submit a pre-planning application within the next month, with a potential full application being submitted as early as the start of next year. They sort of broadly presented slash showed us a very rough design of what they would like to do with this site, which included approximately 160 dwellings, a country park on the eastern end, which is the area that's in the green belt, as well as some other sort of plans they had around footpaths and how the houses would fulfil certain eco-credentials. I'm sure that if and when they progress to, well, we will, if and when they progress to pre-planning, see these plans in more detail, and we'll be able to offer more detailed comment. So we raised our concerns over the site during that meeting, exactly the same points as we raised in our response to the draft local plan, and the same concerns we've raised at a number of council meetings over the last year around contamination risks, the loss of biodiversity, and the poor access to the site in particular. So to kind of summarise where we are, I would say that they are more progressed with this site than we anticipated. Following that meeting yesterday, our, our Wiltshire councillors in Bradford and Avon have already been in touch with Wiltshire Council planning to try to get further details on this. Obviously, we were alarmed at what we heard yesterday. And also, the town council is about to embark on updating our neighbourhood plan to continue to identify other more suitable areas in the town for small-scale development. The only thing we agreed with Cala Homes at the end of this meeting, after we made clear our repeated opposition to this site, was that we would keep lines of communication open with them. I think we'd be foolish not to, given that we've learnt a lot more now than we did beforehand. And we'll continue to speak with them as the situation progresses, without in any way prejudice, it's a hard word for me to say, prejudicing our position opposing that development. Alison, is there anything you want to add from, from that meeting before we throw it out to further comment?
Just to say that one of the other worrying things they said was that they'd already been having discussions with highways. So we didn't get from them really what, any ideas they had. But it's, they have been, when we were talking about the traffic things where you count the traffic, they have put quite a few around the estate, Mith and Meadow and St Lawrence Road. So, yeah, it's quite worrying that that, they, they did say that the access to the site would be St Lawrence Road. So, well, my fear is that that, they might be taking away the grass verges, they might take away the grass island with the two trees, because it's quite a tight access for a site of 160 houses, which could generate 320-plus cars going in and out each day, onto the Trobage Road, which is already really busy. So the, yeah.
Thank you, Alison. Anybody have anything they want to, to ask? There may have been things at that meeting that I've forgotten to mention, if you, if you ask me, they may prompt them. Any comments at all on where we are? No? I can see a public question or a couple of questions. Sarah, you're to hand up first, if you want to jump in, and then we'll go to Annette.
Okay, actually, this is what I'm here about, which I, you probably guessed from sitting on the panel a couple of weeks ago. I'm really, really angry, so I hope you guys are as angry as I am, but you as a town council seem to have had no idea, and Wiltshire Council planning have known about this. I'd like to know, first question, how long have they been in contact with Wiltshire Council?
So they didn't give a specific answer, and the, well, so there was definitely a four-year figure banded around, and I think they said they'd been in discussions about the land for four years. So that may be that they were contacting Mr Hussey as long ago as four years, but the discussions with Wiltshire Council, I don't know. I share your anger that we had no idea this was happening.
Yeah, I, I'm angry for you, and I'm angry for the, the town, because it looks like we're being hoodwinked for greed. I, I spoke to Nick Thomas, the head of Wiltshire Planning myself, about a week before all the testing started. And he assured me that I didn't need to put in a Freedom of Information request about the covenant or anything else, because there wasn't anything going on, on that site. And then within a week, the testing started. Now, we, I have read all the planning from 2008, 2009. I'm assured that the contamination will not have improved, it will be the same. I'm a, I'm a bit sort of shaken, really. So I'm, I'm angry for you, and I'd like to know, as a town council, what are you going to do about this? How are you going to approach Wiltshire Council and say, why have we not been informed about this? And I appreciate that you're looking for other areas for development instead, but it doesn't mean that they won't still put their planning application in, even if you find somewhere else for it to be on the, the draft plan, the, the full plan. They can still apply for planning in that area. So it doesn't matter where you find. So we need to be stepping this up, our objections. And I sat outside the polling station at the youth centre, and within three hours I had filled in eight pages of people signing the petition. I could have signed, got three times more. We need to engage Bradford people now about this, because it's going to affect everybody with the traffic, the infrastructure. We cannot get doctor's appointments now. And I've lived all my life, and I've never known it so bad. So we need, it's about the whole town, not just the, the people in the south. So can the town council please come up with a plan that will be supported by, there's a lot of people that are willing to support you in this, in delivering leaflets, getting petitions signed. But your approach to Wiltshire Council really is important. So could you tell me what that is going to be, please?
Yeah, cheers, Sarah. So, I mean, as sort of as shaken as you are now, as I would suggest how me and Alison came out of that meeting yesterday, it was very surprising. In terms of speaking to Wiltshire Council, so I know, Tim, you've spoken to Nick Thomas this morning already.
I haven't actually spoken to him. I, I tried to call him first thing this morning, left a voicemail, and then I thought, well, I won't wait for him to call back, I'll send him a meeting invite, which I did for next week. And I subsequently received an email saying, I'm sorry, but we are in the latter stages of putting together the local plan, and we cannot discuss individual sites at the present time. Well, I'm telling you what he said. He also said that they have not had any recent discussions with developers. Now, that may mean that they've had not in the last few weeks, I don't, I mean, I just don't know what that means, but we've yet to flesh, flesh that out. So we are on them already, but at the moment, we're not really getting very far. But we will be, we will be chasing them, let's put it that way. And I know Sarah Gibson also has promised to, to get on to them as well, so, yeah.
Yeah, I spoke with Sarah on this this morning as well, and she's gonna chase them, like you say. One thing I would say, which I didn't mention about the meeting, is that they characterise the opposition to this site as the most militant they have ever seen. So they're aware that this is not a site that's gonna come easy for them. They're also going to have to have some public consultation about this if they want to move any further forward, and that is gonna be obviously a key opportunity to engage. In fact, they were asking us as a town council about how best to engage with people, which I, which I thought was a bit rich. So those are the areas we can fight on there. I appreciate what you're saying about the other sites, and you're right, it's not gonna stop them putting in the planning application. to stop them putting in the planning application. We can do what we can with providing other sites, which might make it less likely that land gets released off the reserve list. But we will need concerted effort from residents. We will need concerted efforts from all of us in the town council to continue to make our objections clear. We did that strongly yesterday. And their argument was, well, are you just opposed to it for the sake of it? And we did explain the reasons why we're opposed to it, which were sort of nullified, weren't they, by, you know, in their opinion, with different things. They do have experience in these sort of developments, is what I would mention. It's clear that Calla Homes have been chosen because they've done similar sites on contaminated land, on difficult to build land. So I suspect that's why they've been brought in. Simon, I could see your hand up.
Simply, I think this is one to bring Brian in on very early.
Yeah, exactly. So I very much intend to write to Brian exactly about this. And I also know from discussions with him before the election that he is also opposed to development on that site. So he would be a very, very good ally for us to have. Similarly, although she is not our MP, she is our town councillor, Sarah is similarly opposed to development on that site as well, I think. So, exactly. Yeah. So she's been contacted, well, I've asked her to contact Wiltshire Council this morning, she said she would as soon as she could. So we are trying to pull all the levers we can pull. Obviously, we've got those petitions going. We know that there's been some dealings with the media as well, from local resident groups, as well as things that we've put out into the public domain. And I also made a statement last week, or two weeks ago, put the petition out. But yes, we should definitely bring Brian in on this. I will email him specifically about this topic. And it will also be very much top of our agenda when we speak to him at an introductory meeting as soon as possible. Annette, you had a question, didn't you? Sorry.
Thank you. Can you hear? Good. Surely, successful opposition to building on that site hinges on finding an alternative location, preferably to my mind, on the south, on the north side of the town, because that will not involve crossing the town bridge for vehicles. And there's the, I don't like naming names, the Clark's site on Cemetery Lane, which I believe is on the market unless it's recently sold. Or a potential site on the Bath Road, which to me are, for Bradford, better to have, if we're going to have development, have it on the north side of the town. And the, following that up, what are we as a town, or you as a town council, doing about trying to find an alternative location? And the second point is that the proposed changes in planning law are going to have a significant effect. How can we influence that?
So on the first part, I've had discussions this morning with Ian about getting our neighbourhood plan in order and cracking on with that as quickly as we can and looking at other sites and making sure that we outline areas for development that we as a town agree would be better than this one. The second part, how are we going to influence planning law? I'm open to ideas. I don't know how we're going to influence planning law, sadly. We will have to work with what's in front of us and that appears to be changing. When that changes... Yeah, exactly. When that changes, I don't know. Alison, I will take your comment and then I can see a hand up with Andrew. Yes?
We did put out a call for sites when the local plan came out and we found out the golf course was the so-called reserve site, which meant if we can't find other sites, that will be built on. We put out a call for sites. We've had about nine people put in, well, nine lots of land. We've discussed it. We've met with some of them to talk about the possibilities. And a lot of them are on the north side. And I agree with you, it would be much better to put them on there, on the north side, traffic wise.
I think it would be a good idea to make a really strong case for that. We do not want extra traffic through the town. And most people commute to Bath, Bristol and Gimpin'. I'm assuming. Who's done a survey? I haven't. But I'm assuming that's where they go.
Thank you, Annette. Andrew, I'll take your question.
Thank you, Chair. I sent in to, I think, committee chairs and mayor, a list of 20 small or medium sized brownfield and under utilised sites, because the planning framework says under utilised sites are good candidates. One or two of them were in what the Labour Government would now call the grey belt, Bradford land that's in the green belt. Sadly, I'm a bit used to not getting emails acknowledged by the town council. But can you tell me that you, can you show me that you received that list and tell me what you'll be doing with it? Because I think that it's got enough suggestions to put in well over 100 homes altogether, mainly within the boundaries of the built up area in the town.
Thank you, Andrew. I definitely received your email. I remember reading it. I think we'll probably end up looking at that when we come to the neighbourhood plan and looking at that with our planning consultant on that one and seeing which of those sites we feel are suitable to be included there. So yeah, I think that's probably when we'll use it.
But it could be relevant to the local plan review and to the golf course situation itself. So I would be requesting you not to leave it until some later stage in the neighbourhood plan. And I'd be happy to meet somebody to talk through the sites or even do site visits. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Andrew. Any, oh, sorry. Yeah, Sarah, go on.
Sorry, I just wanted to follow up then. I appreciate all the other sites we looked at. But my main concern is that if a pre-planning application could go in by next month on the golf course, we don't have time to do that to prevent this build, this planning application going in. I think what I was, I did ask, but it probably got lost in all the other waffle that I was talking. What are we going to do to go into the next gear or the top gear or overdrive to set out the petitions, banners, posters, leaflets? We need to get the town engaged. And we know that Bradford people, when they know something's wrong, they do stand up and they do get engaged in things. So if I can get eight pages in three hours of signatures, then I'm sure we can put petitions in every single shop and pub and restaurant and get this moving forward that we object and get the media involved.
Yeah, so...
Do you agree with that, Jack?
Yeah, well, thank you, first of all. I know you were there for hours at the youth centre on election day, getting those signatures. I don't know if you've still got them, but please, yeah, can you get them into the town council and we'll add them to the ones we have on our online petition? That's the one, the most recent one we need to add to, to show growing support. In terms of other activities, I think what we need to do is continue to make clear how vehemently we oppose this site. So as a town council, obviously, we need to make sure we're pursuing all of the relevant areas that we can and make sure that we fight this in the areas that we're able to as a town council. Residents have been incredibly engaged and for the fact that Calla Homes described it as the most militant they've ever seen, I think, I think they're all, I think they're fully aware. So we will, you know, we will have to keep making sure that we keep this at the forefront of people's minds. And that's both the developers, Wiltshire Council and local residents. And the town, I can assure you, it is at the forefront of the town council's mind, but also at the forefront of our minds. So anything we can do in that regard will make clear how strong our objections are. But in terms of the pre-planning in the next month, I mean, pre-planning is pre-planning, that is very likely to be submitted. But at the very least, at least we'll have an idea of what we're dealing with at that point and we can look at it. Kate, I can see your hand up.
I just wanted to stress the importance of the communications coming from all sides. So it's great that Tim is obviously contacting Wiltshire Council, that Sarah, also Brian. But I think a letter from yourself to represent the town council is also really important, both to object, but also to talk about our disgust about the fact that it has been talked about, sort of in secret, without our knowledge and that, you know, maybe questioning how long these conversations have gone on for. Because it's interesting that they won't talk to us, but it does seem like they have been talking to them.
Yeah, I completely agree. I will, I'm very, very happy, and I will do this tomorrow, to write to them and seek some clarification on what discussions have been had and see what they say. That is, that is not a terrible idea. I will give them a little bit of time to respond, but I tend to make that response public, don't worry. And if they go silent on us, then yes. Okay. Oh, Ian wants, fine, go.
I just want to say that also in the meeting, they are going to go live an engagement website. And they're going to ask for comments. So it's, they're going to do, they're going to do an engagement website, which should be going live any time now. Yeah. So they're going to be asking for comments. So if you want to flood that with people's comments, I'm sure it'll help them understand where we are.
Yeah. So, no, so the, on the posters that went up, there was a URL for a website that I think some people, well, lots of people tried to access when the posters went up, but it wasn't live yet. They told us yesterday that that will be going live shortly. They've been having some issues with it. And yeah, that will be another really useful place to make very clear exactly what we think about development on that site. So do feel free to speak to them. Kate, then Katie.
Sorry, I've forgotten what I was going to say. No, of the discussions. One, I was going to say that I think you're asking what we can do. And I think, you know, we can go through these official channels. I think what the communities can do should be a separate thing heading in the same direction, because I think it's really important to show the strength independently from the community, rather than the community response being led by the council. So I think that's really important. It really is a community response and not something from us, that we do our own official channels. Also, just pointing out that Trobridge is next door and that sometimes just going helps, not just writing letters.
This, yeah, this has been discussed before as well with County Hall down the road, definitely. Katie?
Yeah, what I was going to say, sort of actually follows on from Kate, it doesn't need to be a sort of several pronged attack, as it were, on this sort of proposal. And I think what I would find really useful, and I think would help our campaign, is to have, whether it's a sort of flow diagram or something that very clearly sets out the procedural and legal routes to challenging this, how it, you know, links in with the local plan, how we can challenge that. There's the examination stage of the local plan that hasn't yet been reached, where we can challenge the fact that it's even in as a reserve site, as I understand it. So that's the kind of thing I think we need to be really clear as to what we, how we can challenge it through those procedural routes, so that then we're best placed to do that at the appropriate stages. I think it's the end of this quarter, isn't it? Sorry, the final quarter of this year, as I understand it, that the local plan reaches the examination stage. And I think if we can be set up to challenge the golf course even being in as a reserve site at that point, that would be a really good thing to do.
Yeah, absolutely, Katie. Thank you. Any other comments at the moment? I appreciate this is obviously very new news for everybody. So if anybody does have more questions or thoughts, do feel free to get in touch with me however you want. Again, me and Alison, the only thing we sort of ended up promising them at the end is that we would meet with them again at some point, Calla Homes this is, to keep that line of communication open. I don't know when that will be. When it is, we will make obviously all councillors and everybody aware of when that meeting's taking place and what the outcome of it is as well. But in the meantime, please do feedback to everybody. Yes, Jenny?
This just occurred to me, is we have three schools, two primary schools and secondary school. Secondary school does have spaces because they have Trobridge children as well go to them. So Bradford-on-Avon children will get priority, I assume. But three schools aren't enough for the children we've got, the primary schools. We're not going to be able to provide places for maybe, I don't know, 200 odd new children. So we need to get the schools on board and we need to get the surgery on board. And it's no good them just saying, we object to this. What we want them to say is very clearly, yes, we will get in touch with Wiltshire Council, we will get in touch with anybody you want, we will do the same things that you're doing to try and stop this happening. Because actually, we can't deal with it physically on the ground. They just can't deal with it practically.
Yeah, absolutely, Jenny. Kate?
I think the services are a really important issue. Unfortunately, we are, for some reason, Bradford-on-Avon, our area, is ahead of the curve in terms of the declining birth rate. So actually, our schools aren't full. And they, you know, they won't see that as an argument at all. I do think the doctor surgery, whether or not they will then say we're going to invest in, you know, that there are things that they can kick back in ways that they can try and mitigate those kind of...
Sorry, and this is part of the conversation they were attempting to start with us yesterday about what they could offer the town in respect of extra community things if they develop here. Again, I didn't make quite clear that we oppose development on that site. So that conversation didn't go that far. But yeah, it's certainly something that I think everybody will have at the forefront of their minds, not only that that site shouldn't be developed on, but also the potentially detrimental effects on the town with that many houses. Okay.
They didn't really offer us very much apart from a third of the site. They said they were going to get a landscape designer, landscape architect in to do something with the green belt part. That's about it.
Yeah, I think we'll see more as and when and if it goes to pre-planning. Go on, Sarah, make a final point and then I think we're probably drawing to a close.
It was a very final point. You're right. There's section 106 is what they used to call it. So in looking at the 2009 application, there was a sweetener that was going to Wiltshire Council. But it was a ring fence to come to Bradford-on-Avon. So and we need to ensure, but these are sweetness, these are things that, you know, they'll give a carrot and then half, once they've got their diggers in the ground, they'll pull them out and say, we can't afford it. So this is all part of their marketing ploy. And I'm just so angry. And I just hope people can see through it. Thank you. Sorry. I won't say anything more.
No, no, that's absolutely fine. No, as I say, we didn't really entertain that conversation at all, did we? They didn't, it didn't last very long, that part of the conversation. I think they took the hint quite quickly. Okay, any further comments on this one? Or should we draw it to a close there for now? Obviously, we'll update if things change very quickly. No, lovely. Okay. In which case, the final thing for me to say is the date of the next full council is on the 3rd of September 2024. But thank you, everybody for coming.